Good afternoon. I'd like to call the November 12, 2025 School Board Work Session to order. First, we have an update on special education from Ms. Manos.
Good afternoon. Board Chair, Vice Chair, Members, and Dr. Murray. I'm Summer Manos, Special Education Director, and I appreciate the opportunity to share the special education update with you. Today's presentation will outline our key topics and priorities for the 2025-2026 school year. Before looking ahead, I would like to take a moment to highlight the progress we've made during the 2024-2025 school year, as well as the foundational work that continues to strengthen the special ed programming that we provide our almost 9,000 students with disabilities. This success is truly a shared effort. It reflects the dedication of our teachers, instructional and support staff, central office teams, school leaders, and the parent representatives of our Special Education Advisory Committee, as well as you. Most importantly, it reflects the partnership that we share with our families, who work alongside us every day to ensure the best outcomes for our students. While the work is never done, it is rewarding to pause and acknowledge the progress from the 24-25 school year. We reported to the Board in August and again in December about our efforts to strengthen inclusive practices across all grade levels. This past year, we expanded our early childhood special education inclusion model from four schools and seven classrooms to five schools and 11 classrooms. This growth represents more than just numbers. It reflects our commitment to ensuring that our youngest learners begin their educational journey in inclusive environments where all students learn and grow together. We also reported to the Board on our restructured secondary transition services, designed to create greater post-graduation career and life opportunities for our students with disabilities. Over the past year, we've expanded work-based learning opportunities, giving more students real-world experiences that connect classroom instruction to meaningful employment pathways and promote independence. Throughout this past year, we have strengthened instructional collaboration and expanded the impact of our specialized teams. Our behavior team has enhanced its work in providing evidence-based behavior supports, both by directly assisting students and by empowering school staff with strategies that improve student outcomes. Additionally, our instructional specialists in reading and math have continued to deepen their partnership with schools, ensuring that students with disabilities receive high-quality instruction aligned with the general education curriculum. These collaborative efforts are creating stronger instructional systems and more consistent support for students across CCPS. Finally, we're proud to share the success of our aspiring Special Education Leaders Academy, which we reported to the Board in December. This initiative supports teacher leadership and builds the internal capacity for the future. In May of 2025, 12 of our CCPS teachers completed the academy, and we're especially excited that four of them are currently serving in coordinator of special education positions in our schools. This program is strengthening our leadership pipeline and ensuring that we continue to have knowledgeable, committed leaders who understand both instruction, compliance, and the unique needs of our students with disabilities. As we move forward, our focus remains on expanding inclusive practices and strengthening opportunities for students with disabilities across all grade levels and all of our schools. We will continue expanding early childhood special education, now on track to reach 10 schools and 20 classrooms, including options for three-year-olds as space and budget allows. Our partnership between career and technical education and special education will grow, increasing work-based learning opportunities for students with disabilities. Participation has already increased from 35 students in 2223 to 91 students in 2324 to 112 students last year, and we plan to continue to build upon that success. We will finalize a multi-year inclusive practices action plan, building on last year's self-assessment. This plan will guide next steps in early childhood, pre-K-12 instruction, transition supports, and include resources needed for implementation. Together, these next steps continue our momentum toward a more inclusive, equitable, and supportive system for all of our students with disabilities. Our partnership between professional learning and special education will continue to build the leadership pipeline through the second cohort of the CCPS Aspiring Special Education Leaders Academy, which we launched in September. Eighteen educators are currently participating in this professional learning opportunity that includes workshops, guided observations, and leadership experiences focused on special education regulations, IEP and eligibility processes, specially-designed instruction, inclusive practices, and effective communication, all designed to prepare them for future leadership roles in CCPS. We will continue to strengthen specially-designed instruction, which means adapting instruction to meet each student's unique learning needs through the use of new, evidence-based instructional resources and targeted professional development specifically in math and literacy. We're also expanding training in social-emotional learning and behavioral interventions, promoting greater alignment among our instructional specialists in the ESOL Department, Title I Department, Office of School Leadership, and Curriculum Development Departments. We're also currently partnering with VCU and the T-TAC to implement explicit instruction strategies for students with disabilities. To strengthen communication and consistency across all of our schools, we're excited to announce that we launched a 2025-2026 School Year Special Education Family Feedback Survey to gather parent and guardian input following IEP, 504, and eligibility meetings. As of October 21, we have received feedback from 287 families, providing valuable insight into their experiences with our special education and Section 504 processes. In addition, we will continue to partner with the Special Education Advisory Committee, also known as CIC, to use family feedback in making sure that we're guiding improvements to programs, supports, and our services for our students with disabilities. In closing, the progress that we've made and the priorities that we've set for this year reflect the dedication of our educators, all of our staff, and all of our families. Together, we're committed to strengthening special education programming and ensuring meaningful outcomes for every CCPS student. Thank you for your time and your support.
Thank you very much, Ms. Manos. Board members, is there any discussion? Ms. Chatters?
Thank you, Ms. Manos. I have two questions.
Sure.
I'll start with the feedback of the 330 responses. Are we, sorry, are we going to get a summary of the feedback as a follow-up of, you know, what the families are saying?
Absolutely. We get monthly updates as far as the data is concerned, and I'd be happy to follow back up and share that with you.
Thank you.
Sure.
And then the second question is, I know we are, for some of my schools, we're having difficulty with having trained special education teachers in our classrooms. So if you could talk to what are we doing to help mitigate some of those classrooms?
Yes. So that is a very hot topic across, I would say, all of our districts and all of our schools, is really meeting, working to meet the needs of our teachers, long-term subs that are in our classrooms specifically for students with disabilities. And so we do have a system within our department where we have specialists and we have support specialists who are assigned to specific schools. And so they go out and they collaborate with both the CSE and the classroom teacher to provide guided strategies and model instruction and provide resources. Our team can do that as needed, or if we get, and hey, we need immediate help, then we look at who's available and we try to really make sure that we can respond in as timely manner as possible. We also have ongoing partnerships with our colleagues in other departments that provide both mentorship opportunities to new teachers, as well as make sure that there are school-based opportunities for CSEs to meet the needs of the teachers in their classroom. And then we provide CSEs some targeted support that they can push down to teachers, as well as offer ongoing professional learning opportunities for all of our teachers. We have a really exciting opportunity, for example, coming up on Friday, where we've asked some of our current classroom teachers to provide some professional learning to other teachers so that they can share very specific strategies and techniques and designs that they have set up in their classrooms to support their colleagues. So we have several different layers of systems in order to meet the needs of our staff.
And that information is pushed out to all of them so they know that this is where the help needs to come from?
That is correct. We have a special education weekly update email that includes all of that information.
Thank you.
Mr. Veranto?
Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Thirteen percent, I think, of our students require special education services, so about 8,500.
That is correct. We're pushing 9,000.
Okay.
Last time I checked. Our December 1 count will give us verified information here in a couple of weeks.
So roughly 9,000 of our students requiring special education. And in of those 9,000, the needs are drastically different from one child to the next. So I greatly appreciate the, one, acknowledging that, and then, two, working towards a solution to meet the needs as best we can, understanding that we are trying to hire those individuals into CCPS to accomplish those goals. With that being said, and I know we've got budget season coming up, and I'm not looking for an answer right now, but would like to, and am interested in what your department sees as a need from a financial standpoint, and then what is that going towards as far as recruiting certain individuals with those specialties to come in? Just would like to get a better understanding and overview of what that looks like. Again, I'm not right now, but something that we could maybe look forward coming our way here in the near future. And then also, Virginia Tech?
Yes.
Okay. Got it.
Thanks for noticing.
Absolutely. Just greatly appreciate what you're doing in the entire Special Education Department, so thank you.
Thank you, and I will work on getting you that specific information. We do have frequent collaboration with the Human Resources Department around all sorts of current practices, as well as thinking innovatively and thinking ahead of what that can look like as far as needs are concerned for our staff and meeting all of the varying needs of our students, so I will get back to you with some specific information about that.
Thank you.
Mrs. Chatters?
I'm sorry, I had one more. I said it was two, it's three. You had mentioned early on that we're trying to do the ECSE classroom expansion into 10 schools.
We are.
When you get a moment, I'd like to know what 10 schools that were...
Tell you the ones that we currently have programs in.
Okay.
And then future programming is continuing to be in the works.
Okay.
Do you want to know our current schools?
Yes, please.
So that would be Evergreen, Greenfield, Henning, Crenshaw, AM Davis, Ettrick, and then, of course, Seaclaw.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it. Next, we have a presentation on providing new teacher support from Dr. Hill.
Good evening. My name is Missy Hill. I'm CCPS's new teacher support specialist. I am honored to share information about new teacher support provided through the New Teacher Induction Program, or NTIP for short. For the 2025-2026 school year, NTIP provides support to approximately 100 annual substitutes, approximately 275 year-one teachers, and approximately 340 educators serving as either annual substitutes or teachers who are new to CCPS but have prior years of experience. The New Teacher Induction Program provides targeted support through annual sub-institute, new educator orientation, mentorship, induction goal-setting, and year-long professional learning, all of which is tracked to allow us to monitor and adjust as needed. For the second year, NTIP hosted annual sub-institute during New Teacher Work Week, which is the week prior to all teachers returning to work in August. In response to last year's feedback, sessions were offered at two different times, one for elementary educators and one for secondary educators. New and returning annual substitutes who were filling a teacher vacancy were invited to join. This professional learning opportunity was developed with an understanding that many annual subs did not engage a traditional teacher preparation program. So during this half-day session, participants focused on human growth and development, as well as foundational concepts for classroom management and instructional planning. New Educator Orientation, or NEO, took place during New Teacher Work Week in August 2025. NEO includes both face-to-face sessions and asynchronous sessions for anytime, anywhere learning. On our two face-to-face professional learning days, participants attend sessions based on their level of elementary or secondary, and topics include curriculum and instruction, gifted education, special education, classroom management, technology support, and various strategies to support instruction, relationship building, and parent communication. Asynchronous professional learning topics include understanding the CCPS Rapid Identity Dashboard, understanding observations, goal-setting, summative reports, and ImpactU, CCPS policies including 3030, 3031, 3035, 3040, 4010-R, 5031, and 7200, data-driven decision-making, and more. All resources from our face-to-face professional learning and the asynchronous professional learning sessions for NEO remain in our NTIP Canvas course all year long, ensuring ongoing access, which is especially important for late hires, seeking both CCPS-specific information and best practices for the classroom. During New Teacher Work Week, new teachers and annual subs receive support not only from the central office, but from their home schools as well. Each school has a mentor coordinator assigned by their principal. Mentor coordinators receive resources to support their collaboration with their school leaders as they plan school-based sessions on the first and last days of New Teacher Work Week. On these two days, mentor coordinators discuss helpful school-based information like details from the faculty handbook, who's who in the school, what's where in the school, expectations for communication with families, school-based PBIS models, and more. These two days are also an opportunity for mentors and mentees to meet for the very first time. As mentioned previously, NTIP supports annual subs and teachers new to the profession, but it also provides support for any teacher who is transitioning into the division. Mentorship roles through NTIP aim to be responsive to the different needs of educators participating in the program. Mentors are provided to teachers with zero full years of teaching experience and to annual substitutes. Early-career teachers are individuals with one to five full years of teaching experience, and they receive a colleague. And veteran teachers with more than five years of teaching experience who are new to the county or to their school receive a buddy. Mentorship provided to mentors, mentorship provided by mentors, colleagues, and buddies are structured to meet the level of experience of the new hire they support. All participants in NTIP receive ongoing informal check-ins. Annual subs and year-one teachers receive year-long consultation and the opportunity for both classroom demonstration and peer observation, as stated within the Code of Virginia. Early-career teachers who are new to the division or their school receive a semester of consultation in both classroom demonstration and peer observation. This support can be extended to a full year as needed. And then veteran teachers with more than five years of experience who are new to the division or their school receive a semester of consultation. That support can also be extended to include classroom demonstration and peer observation and to be for the full year as needed. At the schools, mentor coordinators plan meetings to share information and provide professional learning as it becomes needed throughout the year. Mentor coordinators do receive a sample calendar of potential topics for monthly meetings, but they have the autonomy to adjust that sample as they see fit for their school's needs. Centrally, the work of supporting new teachers continues well beyond their first work week in August and is a labor of love organized by the NTIP Advisory Board. The NTIP Advisory Board is a group that consists of central office specialists and teachers, instructional designers, and administrators from the elementary, middle, and high school levels. These individuals understand that professional learning is highly effective when it is personalized to meet the employees' needs. Therefore, NTIP board members collaborate with me to review feedback from the previous year's end-of-year survey and develop an NTIP Professional Learning Needs Assessment during the summer months. The NTIP Professional Learning Needs Assessment is issued two to three weeks after New Teacher Work Week. Once data from the survey is reviewed, the advisory board sets professional learning opportunities that occur during both fall and spring semesters. Sessions typically begin in the first week of September. Sessions are provided face-to-face and live-virtually. The live-virtual sessions are recorded and turned into asynchronous learning opportunities, ensuring NTIP participants have access to information on their own time and in their own spaces as needed. In 2025-2026, NTIP introduced induction goal-setting. Early-career teachers and annual substitutes who are filling a teacher vacancy are encouraged to set induction goals for their first three years in the profession. The induction goal-setting document provides pre-written SMART goals that align to professional learning needs commonly identified in the NTIP Needs Assessment over the last five years. Those topics are classroom management, collaborating and communicating, instructional planning and delivery, relationships in classroom environment, and wellness. While participants are welcome to explore any topic of interest over the course of the year, using the induction goal structure allows an educator to focus their learning on a specific topic this year and shift to a new topic in subsequent years. These screenshots show where annual substitutes and new teachers go to find and register for available professional learning opportunities that have been developed in response to feedback and the needs assessment data. They can search chronologically, or they can search based on a topic of interest under those five previously mentioned professional learning topics that align to the needs assessment data and support new hires with their induction goals. Participants can attend live-virtual offerings, and they can also search a collection of asynchronous learning opportunities. Finally, through annual reflection, we always strive to get better at new teacher support. Information is key in that reflection. Central office collects information about participation in the New Teacher Induction Program all year long. Schools report their new hires and their mentor assignments. Attendance is gathered at NEO and at all NTIP sessions throughout the year. The needs assessment data helps identify this year's cohort's learning needs, and feedback from professional development sessions help us hone the information shared and respond to individual questions. And at mid-year and end-of-year, NTIP collects feedback from participants to see what is working and what opportunities there are for continual improvement. Information about mentorship supports is collected through an end-of-year survey as well as when mentors, colleagues, and buddies indicate completion of their mentor expectations when they're requesting recertification points for their role. There is also a record of bi-weekly communication provided to mentor coordinators and their supporting administrators, as well as quarterly feedback from mentor coordinators about what support is needed for their schools. Both of these data points allow for reflection on communication and responsiveness to CCPS schools' individual needs. Thank you for the opportunity to share our approach to supporting new teachers and annual substitutes. Through one-to-one mentorship, school-based programming, and county-level programming, we strive to create a welcoming environment that encourages CCPS new hires to be lifelong learners.
Can I welcome any questions you may have?
Thank you, Dr. Hill. Board members, is there any discussion or questions? Mrs. Chatters?
Hi, Missy. Thank you for the presentation. I had a question, and it wasn't in there, but it was just... We have a roster of about 300 subs that are not annual subs, but just subs.
Okay.
Is there any support that we offer to them when they come into the classroom? Like, are they able to access Canvas to check out the things that are there for, like, new teachers and annual subs as well?
So the message that we give to mentor coordinators is that the more the merrier. So while NTIP is targeted at a specific group, new teachers, annual subs, we also include long-term subs in that annual mentor level, so schools have the ability to assign an annual mentor to a long-term sub if they know that they're going to be in that space. We do that for two reasons. One, we know that they're coming into that space and are going to need support, and that means that there's another classroom teacher who's swooping in and giving their time and their energy. So we want to make sure that the support exists for that long-term sub, but we also want to make sure that the person who's providing mentorship is being recognized for that mentorship. Beyond that, let's say it's a regular substitute who just happens to be there. Again, the more the merrier. Anyone who wants to come and learn, the door is open. So it's not a situation where we're gatekeeping and saying, whoop, what's your job role? Out the door. If they show up, they're welcome to be there.
Okay. And then, last question was regarding the training that's available to them, the face-to-face or the online. It's not a paid professional development day, right? It's on your own?
Yes. So all of our programming happens either, it's outside the contract hours, so they are coming after school if they're attending it live. Now, if they choose to engage the asynchronous, let's say that they were at bus duty and they couldn't come to the live session, those asynchronous sessions live all day, so they could choose to engage that at any point. That might be during their contract hours. It might be when they're at home in the evening. It's kind of their choice at that point.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Hedges?
Thank you. Thank you, Dr. Hill. This was, I love how you have the graduated support for new-to-us, brand-new. Those are entirely different animals, and we really appreciate, as someone who is both new once and new to us, you need different things. I had, my question was similar to Ms. Chatters about substitutes. So I did one day as a substitute in a middle school classroom. I will never forget it. So I'm still scarred. Sorry to middle school people. I just wonder, is there, I know that you said, "That's fine, we can come." Do we have, is that under your purview, or is that somewhere else? Some light type of training for substitutes?
So we do have a collaboration with HR. There are folks who are designated to work specifically with substitutes, and so I have provided them, there's like a, there's a handbook that is provided to long-term subs that has information about NTIP. That being said, technically, substitutes don't fall into that purview, but it's not a situation where anybody would say, oh, we don't want you to learn these things. So yes, there are people who are designated to work with substitutes. They have reached out and received communication about NTIP. And so from there, we can continue that collaboration and grow it. But right now, they are doing their work with kind of the lift of the collaboration that we've had over the last two years.
That makes sense, and that was what I was sort of thinking, but anyway, thanks so much.
Thank you very much, Dr. Hill. Appreciate it. Next, we have a presentation on the accreditation and accountability and continuous school improvement process from Dr. Fox and Dr. Jervay.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Madam Chair, Madam Vice Chair, Word Members, and Dr. Murray. Today, this afternoon, I will be presenting on accreditation and accountability and the continuous improvement process with Dr. Erica Jervay. We will begin with the structural changes and how the state rates our schools to include a more detailed book and accountability, and we will then outline the continuous improvement process and our differentiated support model. A major shift in the new framework is a movement away from a single rating. Previously, schools received one accreditation status that represented both compliance and performance. Beginning this year, the new system separates these two ratings for each school. Accreditation measures compliance with professional standards, as outlined in the Standards of Quality and Standards of Accreditation, while accountability books its student outcomes. As noted here, VDOE has not yet released accountability or accreditation ratings for the 24-25 school year. When that happens, each school will receive an accreditation rating of fully accredited, conditionally accredited, or accreditation denied. Each school will also receive one of four accountability ratings, ranging from distinguished to needs-intensive support. For accountability, any school identified for federal support will have their rating lowered one level. So what does this look like? Accountability is new. We're going to spend a little bit more time here. In terms of this overall 100-point scale, you see here the three base models. These are the most common models based on grade configuration of K-5, 6, 8, and 9, 12. Fifty-eight of our schools will use one of these models. We have one school, CBS, with a non-standard grade span that's going to be a little bit different in terms of the math. And then we have five English learner population schools, or five schools where the English learner population is lower, so they'll have a slightly different formula as well. Within accountability, or within each component, there are indicators. As we see here, the mastery indicators are consistent across all grade levels or all models, reading, math, and science SOLO, and then English learner progress. Middle schools and elementary schools use growth based on reading and math SOLO performance year-over-year and change in score, whereas graduation has high school, or graduation is the second indicator for high schools. And then the final indicator is readiness, but readiness varies by level. With, as you can see here, elementary, middle, and high, it changes. So now I'm going to put it all together for you. One thing that's very different in this new system is that there are no longer targets. For many years, we said, if I get to 66%, I turn yellow. That means I'm approaching benchmark. If I get to 75, then I have a benchmark. My school is green. That is not the way this system works at all. What you see here is, for a standard elementary school, each of the indicators has a number of points possible. So here, in reading mastery, there are 22.5 possible points. This particular school earned 89% of them, so their total for that would be 20. You do that equation for each of the indicators. You add up all of the points earned. And as you can see here, this school falls into 84.39, which is solidly within the on-track category. And mentioned, English learners, so I have an example here for a school that does not have the minimum number of students who have an English language proficiency score. And what we see here is that those values are... And what we see here is that those values are taken out of the mastery and put into the growth. So, that's just a difference. In this case, this is the same data from the previous slide, but with that 10% put into the growth for reading and math, which gave them a little bit of a higher score. So, I have an example for middle school, and reads very much the same way. There are only 20 possible points for reading here. This school happened to earn 98.43% of them for 19.69 points. You do the math, and then you see that this school is also right in the 84 range, which is solidly on track to be the needs of the students. And then, finally, the high school example here, again, this time, mastery in reading is only 15%. 96.91% of the points were earned, 14 of those, but we see again that they are right on track to be on track at 84%. And I picked these three intentionally because they were exactly the same, but then part of the work that we do and Dr. Javay's training does is dig into this data to determine, hey, they're all at 84%, but what does that mean for each school and the work that they do? And with that, I am going to turn it over. You guys. I'll grab my stuff.
Good afternoon. Put my glasses on. All right. Now that Dr. Fox has shared the new models that the state will use to calculate accountability framework scores, the question becomes, where do we go from here? Accreditation answers that question, are we compliant? Accountability tells us, how are we performing? But continuous improvement asks, now what? Continuous improvement is about sustained, deep change. It's not about quick fixes. It's about testing small, measurable changes, learning from them, and building better systems over time. We use data analysis, goal-setting, and the Plan Do Study Act cycle to guide this work. This process ensures that schools don't just comply with standards, but truly improve student outcomes. When we talk about continuous improvement in our schools, the SIP, our School Innovation and Improvement Plan, is the container for that work. It's where we document our goals, we track our progress, and we stay aligned around the changes we're testing and scaling. Virginia Code requires every public school to develop a comprehensive plan to improve classroom instruction and student achievement. This summer, we launched the new 2025-26 SIP aligned with the updated School Performance and Support Framework. As schools responded to the new framework, they conducted a comprehensive needs analysis that examined that student data, as Dr. Fox spoke about, their instructional practices and system supports. From this analysis, schools developed three goals. For elementary and middle schools, their first two goals focused on the mastery index, so they chose either reading, math, science, or English learner progress for their areas of focus, and their third goal focused on the chronic absenteeism as part of that readiness index. High schools followed a similar structure with Goals 1 and 2, again, focusing on that mastery index, but Goal 3 is centered around the three Es of the readiness index, which accounts for 25% of the framework. In short, our SIP serves as our roadmap. It connects our improvement work to clear, measurable goals that reflect both mastery of academic content and readiness for the future. As a division, our role is to ensure schools have the support they need to carry out their SIP. That means providing professional learning, giving schools access to data tools, coaching teachers and leaders, and building communities of practice where schools can learn from one another. It also means monitoring progress and identifying evidence-based interventions where needed. As leaders, we share a collective vision, ensuring that every school has the support it needs to improve, innovate, and thrive. Our approach is not a one-size-fits-all, but rather collaborative and responsive, designed to meet each school where it is and provide the right level of support at the right time. To make this vision a reality, every school is partnered with a school quality support specialist who works directly with school leadership teams. These specialists provide on-the-ground coaching, guidance, and partnership aligned with each school's improvement goals. We also ensure that support across departments is coordinated and aligned, so schools receive a seamless system of assistance tailored to their unique data, context, and priorities. In addition, we offer ongoing professional learning, both division-wide and school-based, so teams can continue to build capacity, strengthen their practices, and sustain improvement over time. In addition to our universal support for schools, CCPS leaders provide targeted, differentiated support to schools identified through state and federal accountability measures. This approach ensures that every school receives the specific resources, coaching, and guidance needed to strengthen instruction and improve student outcomes. Here again, school quality support specialists partner closely with school leaders to analyze data, identify their priorities, and align improvement strategies with evidence-based practices that lead to meaningful and measurable growth. In addition, schools in this model participate in six-week SIP review meetings with division leadership teams that will help monitor implementation and progress towards goals, reflect on outcomes and challenges, and adjust strategies in real time. To further promote continuous improvement, division teams conduct learning walks at least twice a year in collaboration with school leaders. These walks allow us to observe instruction, celebrate effective practices, and identify opportunities for growth through shared and reflective feedback. Finally, when schools and if schools are identified for state academic review or required to implement evidence-based interventions under federal accountability guidelines, division staff provide hands-on technical support. This includes helping schools select, implement, and monitor interventions to ensure alignment. In closing, accreditation ensures compliance, accountability provides clarity on performance, but continuous improvement, that's where the work of change happens. Our commitment as a division is to provide the right support at the right time so that every school has the opportunity to grow and every student has the opportunity to succeed. Thank you, and at this time, we'd be happy to answer any questions you may have.
Before we get to questions, I just wanted to add one addendum. Dr. Javay and I were able to attend a preview of the board, State Board Work Session presentation that was happening tonight. It had not happened, it had not started when I left Spring Line at 3:00 PM, but it includes proposed changes to these regulations that would impact how schools are rated this year and the next two years. And I wanted to bring it to your attention because they are having public comment on it through next Tuesday, November 18th, and it will be on the docket, is my understanding, for review at the December 11 business meeting. The item, if you want to make this note, it is Item J, entitled "ESSA Update" in the discussion items on today's session, and I will be watching it tomorrow morning for that. So, now.
Thank you. Thank you for sharing that, and thank you both for your presentation. I know this has been a lift to understand, and obviously, we're still waiting for guidance, but board members, is there any discussion? Who's first? We'll go with Mrs. Hudgens.
Ladies. Thank you, guys. Thanks for the, there are so many numbers, and I think I say this every time you all come up, but I'm going to say it again, just in case people missed it. There are a lot of numbers that you look at, and you make decisions based on that, and then you add the human component. So, just, I wrote down walks, and I forgot the name of the walks. Just tell me, two seconds, what, just really fast, the marriage of the in-person as well as the numbers.
So, the learning walks provide us, I don't know if this, provide us with an opportunity to connect the SIP and the work of the SIP to what's happening with teaching and learning in the classroom. So, we get to see their SIP really come alive, and we are able to see students engaging in rich instruction. So, it just allows us to really collect that evidence to show schools that what you set out to do as part of your SIP plan is happening in your classroom. So, that's, it does, it is the human element. So, whenever we're looking at data and we're looking at that and we're conducting a data analysis, the data only tells us one story, right? So, it's also about the people in the building and the community it serves, so we take all those factors into place.
It brings it full circle. That's really good. Thank you.
Mr. Pronto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Two questions for you. Do we know the window that this information is to be released?
The most recent update we have is that they have contracted with an outside third party to validate their calculations, and once that is done, then the ratings will be released.
Okay.
But we don't have a timeline for that.
All right. Thank you. And then, second question, the three-year that you just mentioned, was that like a grace period? Is that a learning curve? Could you go a little bit more into what that is?
So, yes, they talked about, tonight, we talked about the components and that each component had indicators, and each of those indicators actually has an index. So, what they're proposing is that there are changes to some of the indices that would impact how much a student counted in the numerator if they got this score or that score or the other score. They are changing the growth model because we no longer have the model that they used, so we're going to have to go to a totally different growth model this year. There also, if we, if I go back to this slide here, for middle school and for elementary school, we will have different things under readiness because there was an intention in the original language to have the performance framework. There's also an intention to add history into the mastery at each grade level. So, all of those are changing, and so it'll be different, this slide will look different next year and the next year.
Because of the indexes that they're looking to?
The index, and then they're also, they're changing some of these components, like here, we would have reading, math, science, social studies, and English learner. On this one, for growth or for advanced coursework, right now, it's 10% that's related to performance in math, EOC courses, is, eventually will be 6% math, 2% science, 2% social studies. So, just sort of shifting how schools are evaluated over the last, next three years.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Mrs. Chatters?
So, my question was regarding the elementary school and middle school readiness indicators, so we can leave it right there. What, were there any other options for them to choose from besides chronic absenteeism?
So, I, the only, like, the performance assessment that measures the five or six Cs is going to be the one that's going to be added at both the elementary and the middle school level. There's been some delay in getting that up and running, and that's, but part of the presentation. The presentation immediately before Item J was on that, the new performance tasks that they're submitting for eventual inclusion in this. But, to my mind, or to my recollection, there were no other readiness indicators that were included other than the performance task at the elementary and middle school level.
So, they only, in Dr. Javay's slide, it only had chronic absenteeism as the option, so you're saying that that was the only choice they had to choose from?
Oh, oh, schools, no.
Yes.
Schools could have chosen, and I feel like, so, high schools did, I don't even know where I'm going.
That's okay. So, for elementary, the only choice was chronic absenteeism this year, because that was the only index in the readiness indicator. They also had mentioned today that the IRW, the Interactive Reading and Writing, could also be a component of readiness. But again, these are all proposed changes, so if those changes are approved, that would change, that could change a school's SIP plan. And so, we, they are annual plans. It allows the flexibility for schools to change their plan based on their current data and based on the performance framework as it evolves as well. So, we could see next year some changes in what schools are approaching as at Goal 3.
So, but as of today, until they make the change, chronic absenteeism is the only thing they can choose for elementary school?
For readiness. That's right. Exactly.
Which they're not really responsible for. Okay. The next question was regarding the schools that have targeted support? If I can, I'd just like to see that list. You don't have to give me the answer right now. I'd just like to see the list of the schools that are on that.
Sure.
Thank you.
Happy to. Thank you so much. All right, thank you.
Thank you both. Next, we have announcements and communications and school board comments. School board members, are there any announcements or comments? Mr. Pronto?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to recognize that for this work session, our interim school board member, Dr. Darby, is here representing the Cloverhill District, and so just want to acknowledge that you're in the gallery, and we greatly appreciate that.
The next school board business meeting will be held this evening, November 12, 2025, at 6:30 PM here in the public meeting room. If there's no further public business, we will enter into closed session, which will be held in the PMR conference room. Madam Clark, please announce the items for today's closed session.
It is my understanding that the school board desires to enter into closed session in accordance with Section 2.2-3711.A of the Code of Virginia, the Virginia Freedom of Information Act, and specifically under subsection 1, the Discussion and Consideration of Personnel Disciplinary Matters, and number 2, the Discussion and Consideration of Student Disciplinary Matters, and matters that would involve the disclosure of student records.
Members of the board, you've just heard the items requested to be discussed in closed session. Do I have a motion in that regard?
Then make a motion, enter into closed session.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clark, would you please call roll on the motion?
Dominique Chatters?
Aye.
Stephen Pronto?
Aye.
Lisa Hudgens?
Aye.
Ann Coker?
Aye. We are now in closed session.